Sorry, my wireless is not that, not that good. Want to remind everybody that we have the Bill Dance Outdoors Catfish Tournament this weekend, Friday and Saturday. There are 70 boats registered, which they anticipate more than that who show up this week. But we have 70 registered as of today. That's three people per boat. They anticipate, the number I've been given is $2,500 per participant is on average what they spend for a tournament. That includes the $500 registration fee, so about $2,000. Most of them have, because the casino is not a sponsor of this, this particular event this year, they've really done a good job of promoting our hotels, motels, and restaurants, and I'm proud to say that they are registered here. And Ms. Helen and the Chamber of Commerce, Partners Bank are working really hard to get us some metrics so that we can kind of see what the impact on our economy might be. Of course, we might not have a return on our investment immediately, but what we're trying to do with that is, or at least not a return on investment that, you know, dollar for dollar this year, but what we're trying to do, and this started before I became mayor, but I thought it was a very good idea and something we should emphasize to try and build yet another sort of brand for our community. And Bill Dance is the person that told me we are one of the best, if not the best, in North America for big fish, catfishing in, in the country. So we need to take advantage of that. So I'm excited about it. And I want to thank our two council members, Don Etherly, Monica Davis, who are on the AMP Commission, who's done so much to support it. And they're already there. I counted about 15 boats today that are pre-fishing this week. They fuel up here, they stay here. So they have a captain's meeting Friday night on the main stage, and then Saturday, about 3 o'clock is a good time to show up down there if you want to come down and, and watch the weigh-in. It'll be pretty exciting. So just want to start with that. Having said that, Ms. Ramsey, if you could, call the row.
Ford. Ms. Ford. Etherly.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Crockett. Saint Columbia.
Here.
Ms. Davis is going to be late, so that gives us three council persons and the mayor.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Ms. Turner, are you, are you with us? You're first on the agenda for the treasurer's report, and I'm sorry I didn't. Okay, maybe he'll join us later and he can do a treasurer's report. So we're going to pass over the treasurer's report from now. And Mr. Valley, who's got a long night, let me also preface it by saying that on that catfish tournament, you and I are supposed to be on a radio interview tonight with a prominent Little Rock drive time sports station to promote the tournament and had approximately seven, I might hand it over to you, Don, if we're still going at that point. Having said that, Mr. Mr. Valley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, and all those who are listening. The first item on the agenda for me is the status of David Randle versus City of Helena West Helena. David Randle sued us relating to incident that happened on, at the corner of Beringo and Claiborne Street a while ago. This has been a few years ago. He sued us. The case is kind dependent, Arkansas Municipal League is defending us on the case, and Arkansas Municipal League has a duty to keep us informed as to what's going on. Mr. Randle's attorney has offered $10,000 as a settlement for the case. So Arkansas Municipal League has a duty to inform you, and so do I. And the issue is, the current status, for those who may not know, is the city has filed a motion for summary judgment. Motion for summary judgment is stating that with all the facts that you have stated, Mr. Randle, we still don't think it meets the legal standard that you can win. And if granted, then we will win the case. So there would be a dismissal. However, there's always a risk. We cannot predict what will happen or how much the, the court agrees with us. And so as such, as always, there's a risk involved in any case. And so they've offered $10,000, and I was asked by Municipal League to inform you of that and see what your position is. Do you want them to continue to go forward? Or do you want them to try to negotiate settlement? I believe we received a letter today, Mayor, was it today, that the, this is now a 90-20 case. Initially, it was all the city's case, and they weren't going to pay anything. I believe that the league sent us a coverage case saying that they now will pay 90%. Is that correct, Mayor? We've seen a letter today. I can't hear you, Mayor. You're muted.
Yes, that's basically correct. We got it yesterday, but yeah, that's right.
Yeah, but so the municipal league still prefers to us to, their position is to keep going, but it's up to the city council as to whether you would vote to decide to settle them or go, go forward. And so the city's exposure would be whatever, whatever that they give. Now, that's the civil rights case, so I wanted to inform you that if they win, the largest danger to any civil rights case is the amount, the volume of work that the plaintiff's attorney brings in. If they receive only $1, we by federal statute become responsible for 100% of their attorney's fees as approved by the court. The attorney for, for them would simply, the, the attorney for them would simply petition the court for, I believe that, I'm incorrect, Mayor, I believe that the, this is David Randle, not Bobby Randle. Bobby Randle, I think we received the coverage letter. So I stand corrected on that. So this is still a city case, we're paying $10,000. The municipal league not covering this, this, this is all city. We were sued by two different Rendles, and I was mistaken when I said David Randle received coverage on, it was Bobby Randle. So that the outside exposure is say that, that the case is not dismissed, and a jury award was $1. Well, attorney's fees in these cases can run anywhere from $25,000 to $100,000, some thousand dollars, even to $200,000. But I don't think that volume of work has been done on the case, but I can't tell you how much work has been done by plaintiff's counsel at, especially on the 19. But there's always some exposure. So I, with that, I would yield to you all to discuss whether you want to keep pressing forward, whether you will make a decision on the status of David Randle, not Bobby Randle, David Randle versus City of Helena West Helena, where the city is responsible for 100% of any potential judgment.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
These run together sometimes. Can you briefly tell us what the allegations are in this complaint?
For me, Mr. Etherly, but it's, it's related to the incident where the police office, the police department came in and they arrested them there on Claiborne and, and Beringo Street in West. It also, I believe it has something to do with his, his car. I'm not the counsel on the, on the cases, Mr. League, I'm just going to communicate the, the offer to you. This is not one that I'm personally working on. So I'm not keenly familiar with all the facts to be, to be candid, which you must, the municipal league has handled all the legal defense.
Okay. I think you mean the, if members are correct, this would have been the shooting incident?
It would have been a shooting where the house was utterly destroyed.
Right, okay, yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. Valley? And this is one of the limitations, I guess, of the Zoom meeting. I am looking at the mayor, the, I'm sorry, the letter, and it does say Bobby Randle versus James Smith, Wesley Smith, Cynthia Gamble, and the City of Helena West Helena. And I'm not sure if there's another letter. I have another letter here regarding another case, but it's not, it's not David Randle. I just want to make sure we've got the right letter we're talking about.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was reading the agenda.
I know, it does say David Randle on the agenda.
That's a David Randle, and that's a separate lawsuit. There is a lawsuit with Bobby, Bobby Randle as well. Let me check my email again, as I was speaking to you, because I received emails regarding each of those cases. I'm checking my email as I'm, as I'm speaking to you.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to read or summarize this letter as best I can. After reviewing, this is Bobby Randle versus James Smith, Wesley Smith, Cynthia Gamble, and the City of Helena West Helena. After reviewing, investigating the circumstances surrounding the above referenced case, Bree Gibson, AML staff attorney, recommends that we amend our original coverage decision as outlined in August 2, 2018 letter, which said defense only coverage was granted by the municipal league. She now requests coverage for the city as well as for James Smith, Wesley Smith, and Cynthia Gamble in both their individual and official capacities. And then it talks about that, what the program covers if they grant that, which is 90% of the expenses for legal defense and 10% of that borne by the city. The program will extend coverage to the city as well as James Smith, Wesley Smith, and Cynthia Gamble in both their individual and official capacities, subject to terms and conditions and so forth. If anything changes, please notify them. As recommended, so it says Bree Gibson has recommended that we amend our original coverage decision. So she's, she's saying that the original decision was that we were on our own, but she has now requested that it be amended to include the AML coverage, which is 90%, 10% on both the city and the individual capacities. That's what the letter says, as I understand. But now, Andre, if you want to elaborate or correct me.
I just went back and searched, searched to, must add to the answer of a specific question. This lawsuit, this is not, David Randle is represented by Attorney James Randle. This lawsuit is by Luther Suda versus the city. And this lawsuit, the complaint says that Bobby Randle has been, this is the agenda said David Randle, but this is Bobby Randle that the email is about. And, and the complaint, Mr. Etherly, is about, she's been outspoken and politically active and said all types of things about our police department, and she was arrested by our police department, and they believe it's a clear violation of her First Amendment right to free speech, and that these arrests were based on her outspokenness about the Helena West Helena Police Department. And she alleges those things. She also states that she was falsely imprisoned, a victim of a felony, and the defendant was, was sued in the individual capacity. The municipal league is stating that their primary concern about this, either reason why they're communicating this off is because the three police officers sued both in their official capacity and individual capacity, which means that they may bear some personal liability if there is a lawsuit against them, a judgment against them. But, so they're saying that she was arrested without probable cause, arrested in violation of free speech, and that this is retaliatory for her outspokenness and, and things that she has done. It says the city has a custom and a practice that they, that they arrest these type of individuals, they fail to train the officers, and lead into deprivation of the plaintiff, Bobby Randle's rights, both state and constitutional rights for her outspokenness. That's, that's summation of, of the complaint, Mr. Etherly. The complaint is much longer, but I tried to narrow it down. Was that helpful, Mr. Etherly?
Yeah, and that's fine. I just wanted some idea what, what the case was about. But that's, that's.
Going back to the emails, the emails we have, that they now cover 90%, and we cover 10. They said the primary reason why they're communicating officer outside of ethical reason that they have obligation to is that the, the, the possible exposure of the three officers to personal liability. But they offered $10,000 to Bobby Randle, and we were responsible for $1,000.
Oh, was, was that right? We're responsible for the 10%, right?
Yes, if, I think that was the man that read, that they're 90 and we're 10.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought we were the 90, but it was the 10.
Well, I'm not, I don't have a ladder in front of me. Mayor, is that you're reading that we're responsible for 10 and they're responsible for 90?
Well, the one I was reading was Bobby Randle. Yeah, that's, that's what it says. Bree Gibson has recommended that we amend our original coverage decision. In that letter, defense only coverage was granted. Now, Ms. Gibson requests coverage for the city as well as for James Smith, Wesley Smith, and Cynthia Gamble in both their individual and official capacities. And then it goes into the 90-10. So that's how I read the letter.
Okay. Now, privately, the lawyers have discussed that they think that we have an excellent chance of winning this case. That's communication they have to us.
Now, you know, my bias on this as an insurance guy is that while, while $1,000 might seem enticing, there's no such thing as a free lunch, and the municipal league will have 90%. And, you know, it just kind of adds up. We want our, as best as we can, we want our loss ratio to be positive. We want to make the municipal league money on their defense program so they can continue to offer it, and more importantly, offer it to us as a city. If the lawyers, and I'm definitely not going to practice law here, so I'll leave that up to y'all who are, but if the lawyers believe we can win it, and that my own personal opinion is that we should go ahead and go for it, because we do have a history of settling, and that encourages more what I would call frivolous lawsuits. And most of the time, frivolous lawsuit cases are not ever ruled as such. And so the only real defense against that is for us to be vigilant. Now, granted, we could end up spending $10,000, I guess, in this case, but in my opinion, it's worth it to take that risk as long as our attorneys advise us that we have an excellent case to win. That's my own opinion about it. But that's, again, as an insurance guy, I'm looking at the whole thing, not just the part we pay, but the part that we're covered for. And we want to be a, I think we want to keep, we want to have a healthy relationship with the municipal league's defense program. That's my opinion. But I'll open it up for any questions, comments.
Mr. Mayor, Joe St. Columbia.
Yes, sir.
The municipal league's advice is what now?
Well, they're just saying that we, and Mr. Valley, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're saying that we have a good chance of winning the case.
Then I suggest we go with the advice of the municipal league. That's my recommendation.
With St. Columbia, I candidly believe that, that, that this offer and communication is offered is primarily prophylactic. I think that, that they think we have an excellent chance of winning. There's always some risk to, to any, any, any case, but that, they, 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 the issue is, if you want to settle, let us know, and if you don't, we'll keep treasure forward.
I'd like to recommend that we move forward, not settle.
Thank you, Mr. St. Columbia. Any other comments or questions, or? Mr. Valley, I'm going to leave it up to you there.
Okay, well, I'll communicate to them, that, that not a second to his motion, and that not a motion so far to sell the case, unless someone speaks contrary. I'll communicate to them that the council positions to keep moving forward, unless somebody makes a motion that we need to settle the case. Okay. Well, let's move on to the next lawsuit, that lawsuit is George Austin versus the city. George Austin is in the Phillips County Circuit Court. George Austin has lawsuit where he, he says he's rightfully terminated by the current chief, James Smith, and that he's due some, some wages, et cetera. Currently, in the COBORD 19s cases, as well as covering 19s environment, as well as in effect of all cases, the First Judicial District, which Phillips County is a part of, and the state of Arkansas, all cases that mediation is ordered, it is mandatory, it is something that we must comply with. We've been communicating with retired Judge Kathleen Bell about being a mediator. Previously, we would do mediation in and through the late Harvey, Judge Harvey. And the, the current posture is, we've been trying to set this up for the past two or three weeks, and we've been texting and communicating, trying to get dates. Ms. Helen sent an email and some text messages, trying to see what dates are. The group had given a couple of dates. One date was September 3, I think the update, August 2. But we need something, because I informed the court, and I informed Judge Bell and Philip Allen, that we would, after a nice meeting, we would have a concrete date for everyone to, to, and we mediate that case. This is not a choice of the city. You have to go through mediation. Now, mediation is not binding. Mediation, you not have to settle, but it's part of the process that we have to go through. And also, he has communicated through his attorney, Philip Allen, that he was willing to settle for $10,000. That's a common number right now. And in a similar case, previously, we settled Philip Keys for $5,000 last year or the year before. I can't remember. I think it was Mayor's first year here. But that, that is the current posture of the case, but we are compelled for mediation. There probably won't be a jury trial for a while because of the COBORD 19. That's a, you have to get this mediation completed within the next 30 days and make a report to the court as to whether there's a settlement or whether the case is going to go forth for trial. So I believe that in, in the, the, the messages that you all have given, the primary dates that you all have narrowed down to were August 26 and September 3. So we need some direction as to what I did to communicate to the court as well as to Kathleen Bell and Philip Allen.
Any, any puter comments from the council? Any particular date of those two dates that you don't want to?
Well, I responded to the email and said September 3 evening.
Anybody else?
Yeah, this Joe St. Columbia, I cannot meet on the 26th of August. That date is out for me.
Okay, anybody else want to chime in? Anybody have a problem with September 3? Maybe I should ask it that way.
At the moment, I don't.
I believe Miss Crockett has a technical problem because it in the evening. I think they were just doing the business day. Ms. Crockett, would you elucidate on your, your comment about the evening? Were you spouting your? Are you available during the day?
Yeah, but the, the text said they are eating.
I guess a practical issue we would have, I think we'd have to do it by Zoom or, I think it said morning or afternoon. But I think we'd have to do it during the business hours for, for us to do it. I don't think they would do it after hours. So it's September 3. Good. If so, what time? Are we looking at the morning or afternoon?
This is Wanda again, and I can do afternoon.
Afternoon would probably be better for me.
Anybody have?
So this afternoon, are we looking at 1:30, 2 o'clock? Is that a better starting time? Which one is better for you all? I wouldn't want to do it immediately after lunch at 1, but 1:30 or 2:00 probably be better for me. Just.
This Joe St. Columbia mornings are always better for me, but I can do an afternoon.
This is Wanda. After 2, or 2 would be good for me.
Don, is 2 o'clock work for you?
It's open as we speak.
And I can't see everybody on here, but anybody cannot do it at 2 o'clock on the 3rd? Is that now? I don't think there's, I have any conflict. So I guess, Mr. Valley, if we, if we could, go ahead and tentatively set it for 2 o'clock on the 3rd. Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm about to text them right now, the 2 o'clock on the 3rd. And we'll, we'll work out the, the location. We also need to look at the Zoom. I guess we'll, we'll meet by Zoom. I don't know if they want to meet in person or how you all want to do it. Are you up for a Zoom or personal?
It doesn't matter to me.
I, I would suggest Zoom, because there's so much, I mean, now that I've been through one or two, there's so much waiting. It might be easier for some of us to do a Zoom. Or maybe we could do both. If somebody wants to be there in person, we could do that, too, I guess. Give people the option. Any thoughts? Mr. Valley, you still on?
Yeah, I'm still on. I was, I was texting Judge Bell and, and, and Mr. Allen, to tell them 2 o'clock on the September 3. And I was trying to see that they, I said by Zoom, I was trying to see that they require any person to be present personally. Because typically, we have the entire council, city clerk, not city clerk, city treasurer, and the mayor at, at all of these. And, but I don't just, I don't anticipate this being no more than a couple of hours at the most.
And generally speaking, the three of us are down at City Hall about that time. So we could just make a point to be in the vicinity of each other so we could talk. And the council members could, but we could all be officially on Zoom. Will that work?
I'll see, we, we can see about the practical issues with it, but we'll, we'll see what to do. I will text to both of them, and we'll, I'll await their response. So I just need some affirmation that we're looking at. Judge Bill wants to know that most city council members want to participate on Zoom and have one representative in person. Can one member of the city council be there in person? Everybody has to be there by Zoom?
I'd be there in person.
Mr. Franklin, was that you, Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Does that, does that work?
Let's say the main and city council.
I can do Zoom.
Now, the rest of. Now, I'm not trying to exclude any of you being there. As many of you all want to be there in person, you can be there in person. But we need the entire body for it to have any kind of settlement. If there's to be a settlement, I am.
What is the location? Where are they meeting?
We haven't decided on that. We're trying to get dates first, but typically, we meet at, in all the others we've met at, I mean, at Southern Bank Court. But we may do something at City Hall. Because it is only Mr. Allen and Mr. Austin, the rest of logistics is city council. What I'm saying is, all of y'all don't have to be present. But we're trying to practically see how, Mr. Franklin said he's willing to be present. Ms. Crockett says she's be a Zoom. I guess specifically, do you want to be present via Zoom or in person, Mr. Saint Columbia?
I'd be a Zoom. I'd rather be a Zoom.
Okay. Mr. Ethel, what say you?
I mean, if we can do a Zoom, I would prefer a Zoom. Be more convenient.
Okay. Why don't we do this? Why don't I and Mr. Franklin appear in person? And then we can communicate with you all via Zoom so we can maintain confidentiality of it. Is that acceptable to you all?
That's fine, Mayor. That's fine.
Mr. Franklin, what say you?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, is that fine?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay. All right, so that's what I'll communicate to them, that Christian Franklin and I will be there personally, and then we will have a Zoom contact where we'll communicate with you all consistently regarding it. Okay, that's what I'll communicate, and we'll go from there. The next, what's the next item on this?
The next item on the agenda is the hate crimes ordinance. And before I ask you, Mr. Valley, go ahead. Just let everybody know that Ms. Naomi Cottom, who's chairman of the racial equity task force, is on the call tonight and as are some other members of the task force. And thank them for coming, and I'll let Mr. Valley decide if he wants to, actually, both this item and the next item. So I want to thank them for their hard work on this. Mr. Valley?
Yes, as it relates to the first matter, it's the ordinance relating hate crimes. As I communicated to you before, the ordinance relating hate crimes is an adaptation of one that's been passed by the city of Little Rock. Basically, where we read it and reviewed it. It was written with the approval of the Little Rock Civil League drafted by Tom Coppin, the city attorney for the city of Little Rock. And so with the hate crime enhancement, the city doesn't have any authority on felonies. This ordinance specifically talks about misdemeanors, and the city attorney prosecute misdemeanors and the city police department going forward with it. Let me give you a pause. Mr. Allen and Judge Bill have confirmed that that time is good for 2 o'clock on the 3rd, and the arrangement is fine with them as well. Going back to this matter, the essence of this is relating to any hate crime that is committed in any form relating to persons, whether it's race, creed, color, national origin, sexual orientation, or anything that's proven to be a hate crime, that's an enhancement. And the penalties go up, but they still fit within the narrow scope of it being a misdemeanor because cities don't have the authority, legislation have to do something relating to felonies. All of these be maintained in a district court of Phillips County, and I would be the prosecutor on it, and the chief would be the person, or the police department, be the person deciding the enhancements, and petition would be asked on the court to specifically classify this enhancement in sentencing that just is a hate crime. And so that is the essence of it. We've had it for a couple of weeks. I think it's well-written. I think it's a good thing to do, and I recommend that you all adopt it.
Thank you, Mr. Valley. Any questions about the hate crimes ordinance? I want to thank the task force, and I believe it's still true that we will be the second city to do this. I hope that it motivates the state to be, to approve it at state level. I think we're still at the third or fourth in the country to pass this. Encouraged by it. Anyway, any other discussion?
Well, when you're moving, let me ask you this question. You're moving Mr. Franklin to suspend the rules, place it on the final reading and reading the title on it?
Mr. Franklin?
If he doesn't, I shall move.
Okay, Mr. Saint Columbia.
Saint Columbia moves that we approved to put it on third reading, third final reading?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Yes, sir, Mr. Allen.
Mr. Franklin, I think second.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yeah, your line is great, but I hear you saying that.
Any discussion about the motion on the hate crimes ordinance to put it on third and final reading? If not, call the roll, Miss Amy.
Okay, can you all hear me?
We can now.
Forward. Etherly?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Saint Columbia?
Yes.
Davis? Four yes, two absent.
All right. And thank you for, thank you, and the motion passes, and now it moves to final passage. Is there a motion for final passage of the hate crimes ordinance?
So moves.
Second.
Mr. Franklin moves final adoption of the hate crimes ordinance. Mr. Saint Columbia seconds the motion. Any other discussion? If not, Ms. Ramsey, call the roll.
Saint Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Davis? Forward. Etherly?
Yes.
Four yes, two absent.
Right. Motion passes, and again, congratulations, Ms. Cottom. And would you like to say anything real quick?
Thank you very much. Thank you all for receiving it, and thank you for approving it. We're very happy about it.
Thank you. Again, thank you and all the members of the task force for your work. I'm particularly proud of our city for doing that. Still concerned that our state hasn't done it, so maybe this will at least help, somewhat add to the voice to do that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the police policy manual approval. Mr. Valley and Chief Smith.
Yes, sir, Mr. There. Again, we've been working on this policy manual for a while. But council, I understand, is 511 pages. One of the things that, in my eyesight, that I recommend is that this goes into effect on January 1st of next year to give the time to be trained and updated and all the changes. The chief may disagree with that. I don't know the status of saying that. We didn't discuss. But it is a lot for them to take in, but much of the stuff is just additional. There are some few changes that will be made in it eventually, but those changes will not be effective until there's some changes in the base pay. And in particular, one of the changes is the structure of the department, where we're looking at four divisions. That, those issues, as you know, would not go into effect of restructuring until there's a restructuring of the base pay and the budget. And so while it makes the division, that does not legally change anything as it relates to the structure, because the chief is looking at modernizing the department. Now, this manual has been sent to the municipal league, it's been sent also to a couple of other outside organizations. The chief has found all those, but it's been approved by them. I painstakingly read the vast majority of it. I haven't completed the end of it. But all of that I read with a few exceptions. There's some editing things. When I say editing, I simply mean typographical errors. I'm not saying editing for us. We need to test, put. And there's one statute that I discussed with the chief that we need to correct. But by and large, it requires a lot more reporting, a lot more thoroughness on our department. And the reason I recommend is that you adopt it tonight, but it's implemented on January 1st to give time to get all those reporting mechanisms and all that stuff in place. Because it is very thorough. It covers every part of the department, and it is well-written. I would defer, I will yield to the chief now and come back after he finishes.
Good evening, everyone. This is Chief Smith, Helen West, Ole Miss Police Department. As I said once before, June 16 of 2020, it was a mandated reform professional standards to serve our community by the President of the United States. It also indicated that states would have to mandate different policies and revise our policies to better serve our department, better serve our community, not only that, to cut back on liability itself. Mr. Valley had basically said something about the organizational chart. The organizational chart is just a base, is based on a chart representing the future structure of our police department to accommodate the needs of our civilians within our city of Helen West, Ole Miss. In that mandate, there were changes that we actually updated to adhere to the reform, not only to the state of Arkansas, but also the United States itself. Those mandates in the policy was the update of our use of force, the way we use deadly force, the way we use hands-on whenever we're dealing with situations that occur under enforced continuing. We also looked at our racial profiling, both use of force and racial profiling, our mandated trainings that we have to take through the state of Arkansas. Also, we implemented the training policy that, thank you, city council for implementing that actually October of last year. Also, we added in the policy manual the duty to intervene, which is came down from Governor Asa Hutchinson, that all Arkansas State Law Enforcement Agency must adhere to on duty to intervene, where an officer, for instance, see that someone, they have been violated, someone's been violated based off their civil rights, or someone sees police brutality, they must react to it. And also, in May of last year, the city council also passed the body worn video, video cameras, and being more transparent to the community. This policy manual was sent to the municipal league. Lawyers from municipal league looked at it and gave thumbs up and gave some recommendations for it. Not only that, the Arkansas Association of Chiefs of Police, which I'm a member of and part of the legislative body of that organization as well, also recommended these policies and gave a thumbs up for that. So with that being said, we have a complete policy, which not only we're looking at the policy and just not giving it out, but we also have to train and maintain testing scores of proficiency on this entire policy book. And as Mr. Valley had said, it's a huge document. But the main thing is to, the implementation of the policy, making sure our officers are properly trained for it and making sure that the community understand that our biggest thing is accountability and transparency.
Now, if I may piggyback on what the chief says, from a legal standpoint, the concern that I had, and Mr. Ethel is familiar with as well, is if you make it effective today, as soon as something happens tomorrow, they're going to be held to the standard of this policy if they ask, okay, what was the procedure? How do you do this? How do you do that? That we disagree with the implementation of the policy. I think the policy is great. But I think the thing is, we have to have time to train so people can understand, well, here's the old policy. But the new policy effective January, that gives the chief a window to get the people opportunity to study it, to be, to test it and be familiar with it. And so if something happens in this current window, the old policy is still in effect, be January 1st, but I'm just saying, the chief and I didn't discuss that today. I was saying, give him a window to time to get his officers up to the entire data policy says. Because once you're sued, the first thing they're going to ask you, okay, what is the city's policy on this? What is the city's issue with this procedure, that procedure? It covers, I compliment the chief because it goes further than our previous policy, and it covers a whole lot more things that we didn't have back in 2006 when we did it. But with that, I defer back to the chief. I don't know how long it would take him to try and implement it, and how much he's actually trained his officers on.
Well, to this Chief Smith, once again, Helen West, Ole Miss Police Department. The main thing right now, we are actually in the second phase of our in-service training, which the state of Arkansas, it mandates 24 hours. Ours is 56 hours of training, so we have a good window to be able to get our officers trained and implement this information to the law enforcement Training Academy in Camden to send that information in, to start training on not only just the main policy, because this policy was just not made up of just new stuff. It actually was made up of the past policies and current up-to-date policies and police trends. So within a four-month period, we still got time. We're still doing a lot of training for use of force firearms, and also the update to the duty to intervene, because that is a very tedious and a very extensive policy that we must adhere to and have a good understanding of that. So I'll say between now and to December, December 31st, we should be able to adhere to everything within that policy and be able to move forward for 2021.
Okay, and so, thank you, chief. And so what I'm saying is, you adopt it tonight. An effective date of it would be January 1st. And we would continue for legal standpoint, you'd be, if you got sued, you're still operating on the old policy until this one is effective. And once they're completely trained on it, you would have that policy in full effect starting January 1st. Now, in the interim, the officer will be trained, and if you were sued for failure to train, the chief would show, hey, we got this new policy we are putting in place and we implemented now, and we have all these issues that we're training them on as we speak. We just want them to be very versed in it before we actually, it is the effective policy of the city. So I wanted the window to make sure that we would have this overlap to make sure the officers are trained, because it's a lot to digest if you hadn't digested it before.
Mr. Mayor, Joe Saint Columbia?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Valley, what you're recommending is that we approve this tonight, but that it not take effect until January 1st under the conditions that our police department is well-trained and ready at that time. Do I understand you correctly?
That's correct. That's correct, Mr. Saint Columbia.
And I thought I'd make a motion that we move forward and that we accept the ordinance, I think it's put into an ordinance tonight under the conditions that you express.
Thank you, Mr. Saint Columbia. Mr. Valley might want to add to that motion.
Okay.
Oh, no, I didn't want to add to it. Whatever is, whatever revisions, that's one thing I felt good. When I met with the mayor and the chief today, we don't know of any revision, but we were bringing back any revision for January 1st. But I say go ahead and adopt it tonight and then make the effect through January 1st. And that should give, that 90-day window should give the chief sufficient time, in his estimation, to train officers. Is that correct, chief?
That is correct.
And I might also ask if by January the 1st. And I'm I might also uh ask if if by January the first, if the chief feels that we're not physically ready, that he make a recommendation to the council that we suspend it until such time as they are, if that's possible, I'd like to. Uh if that's agreeable with the chief.
Well, to answer this, Chief Smith, uh to answer your question, we have no choice right now but to get this done before January first. This is one of those things with this police reform across the United States. Uh it there's a lot of pressure, not only for municipal municipalities, but it's just police departments all across, because if we don't adhere to this, it's a possibility that law enforcement agencies can lose federal money. And so this is the biggest issue is not only just about uh the dollars, but it's also about having our officers properly trained to be adapted to uh new police trends and things that's going on in our community, making sure that we are properly ready and trained for this. We have a window that we have to be able to get this all into the Commission on Law Enforcement Standards. So it's not only pressure from the community, but it's also for the legal side with the Commission on Law Enforcement Standards that we have this implemented and be able to have our officers properly trained, but not only once uh being trained once, but eight yearly being trained during our in-service training. So it's continuous education. Uh we already got the training policy and implemented. Uh we one of the highest, we actually the highest in the state of Arkansas. Thank to everyone on the City Council to mandate that we have fifty-six hours of training for uh uh per se with the state offer only twenty-four. So I think uh we have enough time and I and I know what actually we are already doing it. So it's just a matter of getting the information out to the officers and making sure they understand it and have test uh in with these policies and also update their uh training records so we can reflect that training as well.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we uh move forward on the police manual.
So uh Mr. St. Columbia needs to move that we put it on third and file rating. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Uh it's it's just a resolution, it's it's not an ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. He moved to adopt.
So I move to adopt.
Mr. St. Columbia moves to adopt the resolution approving the police policy manual subject to the um January first deadline and the conditions mentioned.
Second.
Oh, you're Mr. Franklin seconds the motion. Uh is there any other discussion? Let me just say that again, uh the Racial Equity Task Force took up sections of this very large book and read it, took ownership of it. And uh of course, since George Floyd and the events in May, it's been a huge topic. And we're very fortunate. If one thing I've learned about Chief Smith is that he believes in training and uh the fact that we and he's on the legislative panel for the Municipal League to recommend to the state uh how to improve that for the state of Arkansas. So I think this puts us um a- as with the hate crimes ordinance, uh puts us in a position, a good position. And I want to thank Ms. Cottom's and members of the task force, Chief Smith, Mr. Valley, who's worked hard on it, and everybody else. Having said that, any other conversation or discussion questions? If not, Ms. Ramsey-Caldro.
I need a second on the resolution.
I think Mr. Franklin seconded it.
Okay, all right. Okay, Davis.
Yes.
St. Columbia.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Etherly. Forward. Etherly. I'm staying, okay. One abstention, one absent, four yes.
Okay, unless she passes. Uh again, Ms. Cottom, would you like to say anything?
I I'm really grateful. I would like to acknowledge the uh Racial Equity Task Force members that are are on the at the council meeting this evening. I see we have Mr. Kevin Martin, Ms. Taquina Watson, Reverend Koshon Duval, and uh Ms. Christina Mugridge. And uh we're really happy. We thank the chief for his hard work, uh and we thank the mayor for his hard work. We thank the committee and we thank the City Council for making these things possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cottom's. I appreciate your attendance tonight as well. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, uh and thank you, Mr. Valley. You had a heavy lifting tonight.
Before we get away from the manual, let me ask a question that I should have asked before we voted on it. I I've I've always had an issue with the city towing policy, and I'm not crazy about the one that's in this manual, because it mandates towing for what I consider to be hmm some minor traffic violation. Others may disagree, for example, suspended driver's license. It mandates towing and doesn't provide an option for someone to come and pick up the vehicle. I would like to review that at some point in time and perhaps suggest some amendments to it. Uh if that would be possible, if everybody would be open to doing that. Uh my experience just as practicing attorney is that a lot of times people get towed and it's punitive in nature. Uh some words are exchanged at the scene of a stop and then the vehicle gets towed and it didn't really have to be towed. Sometimes people can call someone uh who may have a they may have a licensed driver in the vehicle with them who can take the car away. But as I read the policy, it mandates towing for a stop for driving on suspended driver's license. I use that as an example, in a poor community, we have a lot of people who might be driving on suspended, and it might not be for some reason other than maybe child support. They got a suspended deal, maybe they owe reinstatement fee for something. And uh I I always think about those things and how it doesn't really. I I don't know that it serves any particular purpose uh uh for us to have a punitive towing policy. And and I think that's what it is when I read it. But anyway, I just wanted to throw that comment out then, and if there's some interest in in uh asking it down the line.
Mr. Ethel, by by way of response, one of the things that chief and I have been talking about is there's an issue between now, and we didn't discuss January before the meeting, as I said, between now and the information date, then we could always amend that particular section. Uh because the draft you have says is effective in August of two thousand seventeen. Of course, uh the new draft will say August of January first of two thousand twenty-one. Uh but those issues, we present them to the chief and he and I could discuss them and we could make any amendment specifically by the City Council voting on that portion. Uh we could take it out, just like we did the body cam, or the chief specifically wanted that adopted uh by itself uh for the purposes of receiving and grant. We did that well in excess of of doing the entire manual.
I agree with Mr. Ethel. We uh we need to look into that. That's that is that he is correct. That is one item we need to consider. Thank you, Mr. Ethel.
And I I didn't want to hold up adoption. It's a huge document. I didn't want to hold it up over this. But I I thought it was possible that we could go back and talk about those things. So that's the reason why I didn't jump in ahead of time, because I don't want to hold up adoption of the manual so that they can go ahead and start training and do whatever they need to do to be ready by January. But I would like to look at that uh before before January.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ethel. As Mr. Valley said, we'll be reviewing it one more time before January first. So uh we'll take that opportunity. That'll give everybody an opportunity to review it also and discuss it with Chief Smith and others. So thank you for that input. One thing uh else on that, we'll move to the uh next item on the agenda, which is the information from Suficity. We're going to protecting our software from hacking malware and ransomware. This is really mostly the information item um to bring it to your attention. The uh and it is a sensitive issue. The issue of ransomware has crossed our cities and government agencies across the country in the last, you know, couple of years. Uh there are many cities in Arkansas who have have been held for ransomware, which is basically some external force hacks into your system and takes information, critical mission, critical information, and either shuts down your system or threatens to uh unless uh a certain amount of money is trans uh sent to a uh transferred to a specific account, which is untraceable by government authorities most of the time. Uh first of all, let me say that the we do have an insurance policy for this with the Arkansas Municipal League. And um I should have double checked this, but I believe the uh if I'm not mistaken, the deductible is fifteen percent, I mean, I'm sorry, fifteen thousand, which is still a lot of money. Uh but it's also something that's embarrassing and unnecessary. Yeah, but more importantly, it it renders um uh it renders the city open to a lot of other problems, because we are a custodian of a lot of sensitive information. And so I felt like as part of my responsibilities, it was my job to bring it to your attention. Some of you already know that Microsoft Windows seven uh stopped providing uh updates to and support for their software system. That is the most that is the primary operating system that our computers use. Uh Windows ten is the platform that they suggested that they want us to move to. Suficity, we asked Suficity to do a audit, basically, of our workstations and our software and give us a report on where we are, where we should be, where we should be headed. And that is the document that you have uh in your packet. It's about a hundred thousand dollars if we did it all tomorrow. We had a grant identified pre-COVID for half that amount, which would have been an awfully good start. But at the last minute, uh the government took that money from the grant program and rededicated it or repurposed it to COVID-only spending. And so we weren't able, uh in spite of Ms. Helen's hard work on it, weren't able to get it because they repurposed the money. So I just really felt uh it was my responsibility to bring it to your attention. I don't want to, again, it is sensitive information. Uh don't uh we we we're kind of under conflicting things here. One is that we have an obligation to uh report things to the public. The other is we have an obligation to uh protect privacy as well. So um so it's a little bit of a conflict, but I felt like I were erring on the side of them probably bringing you into the loop on where we are on that. And I would certainly entertain any questions or or comments. We are we are trying to slowly surely replace uh and and I think we will have more specific recommendations coming forward. But I really, my main goal tonight was to make you aware of it and make you aware of the audit. I didn't really have any other uh any other goal tonight other than to just make sure you were aware of it. But we we will be bringing forward in coming weeks, uh you know, some so some solutions to that as we go that are not that are budget neutral, I guess I would say. But uh in the beginning, I just wanted to make sure you understood where we are. So any other, if there are no other, you know, comments or questions on that? And of course, you can always contact us uh outside of the the meetings themselves. Uh the next item on the agenda uh moving forward is the information on a YouTube channel to provide public access to council meetings. And Mr. Koshon Duval, I believe, is is uh with us tonight, he was earlier. And uh basically, Mr. Duval approached uh the city and has been working with uh Ms. Helen Halbert on setting up a YouTube channel so that we can uh broadcast these meetings and potentially other things uh to the public. And again, uh this is mostly an introductory session to make you aware of that and to make sure, especially with Mr. Duval here, uh to see if you had any questions or comments about that.
I have a question. Would there be any cost to the city for the YouTube channel?
No, and if uh if there's no objection, I'm going to ask Mr. Duval if you're on here and he can hear me. But no, the answer to that is 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 free. So you know, that's the magic of technology today. And other cities have it. I've seen it in other other cases. So it does help open up, especially when we have so many things now digitally with COVID. Um I think it is more conducive to that environment. Once we return to physical meetings, I think the audio might become more of an issue. But uh right now, I think it's a very good solution. Mr. Duval, would you like to speak? I know you're on here.
Uh if there's not any questions or anything, I'm I'm fine. I just was looking for a way to help the city. So I'm excited to uh put this to where more people can be involved and watch uh and be involved in what the city is deciding and evaluating.
There you are. And I am Mr. Duval, approach this and this is as a spirit spirit of citizenship and and all and your hard work in the community uh with your uh with your ministry. And we appreciate everything you do for our community and uh.
I personally think it's a good idea.
Great, and Ms. uh Ms. Helen said she is uploading the Zoom meetings to uh YouTube. So you know, there there's definitely a group of people, um probably under forty, maybe not, um who are more digitally oriented than than say I am, for example. And um so it it does reach an an audience um that has felt like it's not being communicated to, I think would be one way to say that. So I'm I'm all for it. Any other comments or questions?
Well, uh Andre Valley, City Attorney, one of the things that that uh Mr. Lajamundi met with me about it, he's been talking to me about it. I think he said he would email the entire City Council about. Yes, he's been concerned about the sound integrity of the meetings, and he's requesting that we look at avenues to make sure that we can improve the sound, because each meeting we have some people lines who are buffering and it doesn't make for clear communication. That's what we're talking about. One of the things I've noticed personally, especially here in Phillips County, is sometimes I'm clearer if I call in from a phone versus from a computer due to the buffering issues. Uh but last meeting, we had difficulty airing the majority of the meeting because of the sound. There was no objection raised to YouTube. YouTube probably is a great venue to reach people, as the mayor said, under forty and some people in our age group as well. But one of the things that is concerning is that we need to look at mechanisms for sound integrity and the quality so that it could be broadcast in a proper manner. But he wanted to, Mr. Monday wanted to address uh the City Council about that, uh because uh one suggestion he had made was maybe we could all, maybe the City Council can meet in the council room and the rest of us be in our rooms and come in as as needed, the people come in as needed. I don't know how you all feel about any of that. I'm just simply a conduit. Uh Mr. Monday uh is concerned about the quality of the radio that he uh that he is uh broadcasting over, and he uh would like you all to do give due consideration to uh looking at somehow improving the sound quality for the meetings. Without yielding anybody else, um I just wanted to communicate to, because he communicated to us and he said he was going to send emails to to that to that extent.
Thank you, Mr. Valley.
I am here. Hello, can anybody hear me?
Mr. Monday would like to be recognized. There's no objection, Mr. Monday. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, uh we have been having some serious audio problems using this the Zoom technology. And I've I did speak with Attorney Valley about this problem, and I've sent out emails to all of you about this. And I did make one suggestion that that uh since there are so few City Council members that the City Council can meet in person with social distances, with social distances and the safe practices with just twelve people in a council room. And that can work and uh and I don't know what would be wrong with that. But my bottom line question is, have you read my emails and have you come up with the? But my bottom line question is, have you read my emails and have you come up with a solution for a better idea? Because even if you go to the YouTube, if the audio is coming out bad, it's going to go out bad over the YouTube network. So you've got to fix the buffering problems and the gaps and noises and sometimes distorted voices. And so, but if you're going to go with YouTube and that's where you want to get the word out and you don't need the radio broadcast anymore, then we can, you know, whatever y'all decide you want to do. So have you all read my emails and have you come up with a solution to fix the problem? Or is the problem now not necessary for me? It says you're going to go to YouTube.
Mr. Monday, I, I was going to suggest that we see how, this is kind of a test on the YouTube channel and see how the audio, if it's improved any. And if that's something that you can link into from an audio point of view, that might improve the broadcast. And by the way, I should, my apologies for not saying this earlier, but thank you for KJIW for broadcasting our council meetings and also for the Helen West Health World for attending. And I should have said that at the beginning, I'm sorry. But anyway, tonight is kind of a test run with the YouTube channel. And understand that the audio is better when you receive it through YouTube. And that might be something that's, that's a solution that would certainly be the cheapest solution. But if it's not a solution, I would be, I don't think they're mutually exclusive things. YouTube is probably a good thing, no matter what we decide to do here on that. But we might ask some of the people, Mr. Duvall included, if they have any suggestions for improving the audio quality of, of all of our meetings, whether it's Zoom or in-person meetings. And as far as the, whether we meet in person or not, I really feel like a lot of that is a personal amount. I mean, in some ways it's a decision not for me to make, but for each elected official to make. So I would kind of, my own personal opinion is to leave that up to the judgment of each individual. That, that would be my response. But are there other questions or comments about?
Can I, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, maybe Mr. Duvall can answer this question because my understanding is whatever comes in goes out. If you have bad audio, if they got problems, unless you can go into every household during the Zoom and set up a technically make it good, make the quality good. And then the people can do the logistics. So whatever the audio, if it's bad audio coming out, if it comes to you, the YouTube network is going to go out over the YouTube. So you're going to have the same problem.
Mr. Duvall, do you happen to have anything you want to add to that discussion? Because I really don't.
Yeah. Well, he, he, Mr. Monday definitely makes a good point at saying that the quality of, the quality of the, of the YouTube meeting would be hindered by the audio. And you know, if, if, if the audio quality is bad at the house or at the place that they're going to be at, then it would be bad everywhere or you know, be bad on, on the deal as well. But I would also say, just like we've done tonight, Ms. Helen has done a very good job at moderating and muting the rest of the mics. I, I got to review the meeting from last week and that meeting, that meeting, it, it basically, there was somebody's phone that was on and it wasn't muted the whole time. And so, so you kind of, you would get that audio from that phone. And I think in this meeting, I think the audio quality has been pretty good. The only thing I would say that is, that is bad with the audio quality is that whoever, you know, depending on whose, whose internet we're using, if, if your internet isn't great, then, then you are going to buffer. And so I think, I think it was maybe Mr., Mr. Valley that he, I saw maybe a few different times where his buffer. But I ultimately, what I would say is, I think that this is a great, this, this will be a great avenue for us to have. This is for us to have it on YouTube. And so maybe the problem isn't that we're going to put it on YouTube, but maybe it is, you know, whether we need to improve the quality for individuals or we need to improve someone's, or you know, internet quality. Different things like that. I hope I'm making sense when I say all of that, but.
So really it comes down to bandwidth and, and that sort of those kind of issues as much as anything, is that right? Is, is that what I heard you say?
Correct, correct. And one thing that, one thing that YouTube will provide for us is that, you know, we may have a couple, we have a couple of non-participants, myself included, right now in the meeting that once we move to YouTube, it'll just be the Honorable Mayor and then also the, the city council members and then whoever is participating in the meeting. And so I know, like, a scenario would be is if we had a hundred people on here wanting to watch the, the, or the city council meeting that weren't participating. We would have, you know, if, if thirty people didn't have their, their mics muted, then you would have so much, you know, the audio quality would be really bad. But since it's going to be on YouTube, if everybody keeps theirs muted until they need to speak, then you, you can monitor and, and produce a pretty good audio quality for, for the videos.
Yeah, Mayor, may I say something again?
Sure, but I do want to add, I think the last meeting I'm maybe was responsible for. And I didn't do a very good job because I didn't know what I was doing. So if the audio was really bad, it might be because I didn't mute everybody and I didn't do all that stuff that he's just saying that we need to do. So you might, you might not want to judge that one meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Monday.
Yes, I know that there has been ongoing problems. And what happens is that when we were meeting in person, we were able to come right in and put it on the air. And, but right now, because of the problems that you have with the squealing audio, gaps and noises and dogs barking in the background and sometimes kids you hear in the background, we have to now do a lot of editing before we get it on air. So you know, it may be okay for maybe YouTube, but as far as airing over the radio, that kind of calls people to turn the radio off and that's, it's not good for radio air. So that's why I'm saying is that we've got to do something and do it quickly. Tonight hasn't been real bad, but it has been an ongoing problem. So what may be okay for YouTube may not be okay when it's going out over the radio, when people are tuning in and office and whatever. And you hear the squealing, I've ever, there are some times when one of the mics where the squealing, I don't know if that's because of the buffering or whatever. But then we have to try to go in and edit that and it's very time consuming and we run against the clock and it's, it's really, it's just becoming practically difficult. And so that's why, unless you can come up, even in a Zoom meeting, even in the, not the Zoom meeting, but if you were going to do YouTube, if the city council was coming in person and meeting, it would be even a lot better. And quality wise going over to YouTube, because now you can adjust the mics and get everything set up and you're coming from one source. Going out to the YouTube network rather than twelve individuals who are now over the Zoom and you can't control everything that's going on, you can't control the muting because it's a very serious logistic problem because sometimes you wind up talking of each other or not hearing each other.
Can you tell where the buffering or the squealing is coming from? I mean, even in our regular meetings, when we be in the council room, I mean, sometimes people are talking over each other, sometimes you can't hear. So is there anything, I mean, is it, is it somebody specifically that you're, you're talking about? As far as their, their internet that, or you just talking about in general?
Well, I'm talking in general, but I have heard that, you know, sometime Mr. Franklin, his, he's, he's, his mic, I don't know what be going on there. And, and even Attorney Valley, there was a couple of times, there were some squeals there when he was trying to talk. So in the council meeting, as long as everybody talk on the mic, we get you up to three inches away from the mic and you're speaking into the mic, the recording is going in, it's excellent quality. And I have told my people that when you notice somebody raring back and not talking to the mic, beckon to them to get close to the mic, because once that quality goes on, it's a finished product. We can come right in and put it on the air. But the way with all this with now with the Zoom and the logistics issue, I, I know you sometimes talk over each other, but because of the, the problem that's going on in your houses, you do not have broadcast quality equipment there. And the technical thing to make it perfect audio. So you got to deal with whatever is, is in everybody's house. If it's a bad internet connection or whatever, I think Mr. Valley, Mr. Valley, are you there, Andre?
Yeah, yes, I'm here.
Yeah, share with me some of the problems. Do was share with me about some of the problems with the internet connections.
Well, all I was saying, I, I think the, I was having issues at home. I'm at City Hall right now, I'm on my cell phone. But the issue that has to do with bandwidth, there's internal bandwidth, whether you, the, the internet is, they promise you to go up to certain gigabytes. And that's what the service provides you and the things that we, that open in your house, whether it's a TV and other things, but using internet affects your bandwidth. But it's also the service providers, if people around in your neighborhood are using bandwidth, you have the same server via that affects externally, that affects your bandwidth. And so the buffering may be an issue at, at, at times and sometimes it's not an issue. I wasn't aware that I was buffering, but I've heard everybody buffer some slightly this evening. Mr. Duvall buffer some, you buffer some, Mr. Franklin buffer some, they buffer some. So it's just, it's just part, it's part for the course as to having these type of meetings, there'd be some slight buffering. But with that, I yield.
If I could, Mr. Valley and Mr. Monday, I want to give us back, I know we have a couple of items and I'm going to have to turn it over to Mr. Etherly here just a second. My apologies. Why don't we type Mr. Monday's points into account and I will like to look and see how it comes off on YouTube. Mr. Monday, if you could look at YouTube, sometimes they have certain audio options that Zoom might not have that, that could improve the quality. And I really do think a lot of it, especially the last meeting was just simply my, my fault. We've gotten a lot better since Mr. Valley had his issues and, and, and again, last, the last meeting was mostly just, just my fault. This meeting's got. I need, I do need to move on and that was.
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 Mr. Mayor, I, I have to agree with Mr. Monday because with people that are listening to the broadcast on the way home from work, we got some people in our city who drive, drive from other parts to get back to Helena and they'd be like, man, I, I can't hear you all. Mr. Monday has provided us a good service. And I think that, you know, by us not meeting in person, I think the council room is big enough that we could meet. I mean, I mean, I'm not, me, I wouldn't, wouldn't mind, I mean, you know, if we follow the city guidelines to social distancing, I mean, or whatever, sanitize the room there. And I offered to, I provided my, my cleaning service to come in and sanitize the room before and after. You know, so we could meet in the council room or just the council and, and the mayor. And if we had any guests, I mean, you know, Mr. Duvall, YouTube channel can pick that up, but we still need to provide people who don't have internet access to look at YouTube. We don't want to cut our radio broadcast off completely. We worked hard to keep that radio program active and I, I wouldn't want us to just throw our radio broadcast away. We have worked hard to get that when, when, at one point you had abandoned the radio broadcast and the video broadcast that we had. You abandoned those, those things and we had to, we had to wait to, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
I just abandoned the payment for them.
But that, but Mr. Mayor, I, I wouldn't finish. I'm, I'm always patient and, and give you your, I don't want the radio or the newspaper to mean your argument. I give you your time to talk, so please allow me the same. Don't, I, I'm not trying to be rude, but allow me the same space that I allow you. Now, I can continue. We didn't have radio broadcast or video broadcast for a while. And now we got it. People that come live in Helena, work outside of Helena, that want to tune in to the broadcast, that want to know what's going on in the city, cannot look at their phone, even now driving and do all these other things that people have to do to attend a Zoom meeting. It's kind of dangerous. So I don't think we, I think Mr. Monday's correct. I had offered to sanitize the room. I have the, I have the machines, I have the chemicals, free to the city. I know people that, you know, and I, and I'm, I got a son at home who has a weak immune system. So I would sanitize because I, I want to be safe and other people have children and grandchildren who they want to keep safe. But we need to make sure that we don't abandon the radio station because the races have been, been good, providing us free service also. So I think we don't, I, I, me personally, I can, I'm just one vote. But I, I, I thank you, Mr. Monday, for providing us a broadcasting service and I don't want to just throw that away. I, I think, you know, YouTube is good, but it's some people who we, as said earlier, we live in a poverty community where some people don't have access to the internet and some people do. But I think that the radio is easier for everybody to access. And that's just Chris Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. And Mr. Monday, let me just say, we will, I'm going to ask each elected official on broadcast if they would, if they want to show up at the council room physically for a meeting, that's certain their, their option. And we'll make that radio equipment available for them, but I'm going to leave it up to them. We'll put it and we'll keep it or we'll let you see how it works on YouTube. I'm confident that it's going to look good. Thank you, Mr. Duvall. I want to move.
One thing, Mayor, before you go, just one quick thing. I feel like some of the issues that we've been having as far as the Zoom, I think they're, they're getting better. I think it was new to some people at the beginning. But I disagree with going to the meeting room right now. I think if there's some issues with some people with their bandwidth or internet at home, maybe we need to address those things. But I, me and I'm only one vote, but I disagree with going to the meeting room right now.
Ms. Davis, I personally agree because we have a fall coming up that, that worries me on the COVID issue. But I also don't feel comfortable telling anybody they can't if they want to.
That's true.
So we'll make available the radio equipment should Mr. Franklin or anybody want to show up. But I do agree with you. Having said that, and I'll just say that we make a big thing about what it takes to get on the agenda. So I get uncomfortable when we start talking about things that aren't on the agenda because I have to say no to a lot of people who didn't follow those guidelines. And then they don't feel like it's fair if someone brings up stuff that didn't get on the agenda. And it could be my fault that didn't get on the agenda, so I'm not.
Mr. Mayor, did you, did I get, I mean, I was on the agenda.
I've got, I get to get up. But yeah, I got your email. Like I said, it might be my fault, but I do need to move on. And right now I'm going to hand off the, the running of the meter over to, with, without any objection with, to Mr. Etherly as acting vice mayor. And I unfortunately have to jump off because I'm doing a promotion though for our city on the catfish tournament this weekend. So I appreciate your involvement on that, Mr. Etherly. If, if it's okay with you, I'm going to turn the gavel, the virtual gavel over to you.
I mean, that's, that's fine. But as I look at the agenda, did we complete, I think we completed everything.
We have, but I always ask if there's anything else and I'm at that point where I have to give it off, so.
I have something I would like to talk about.
That's fine, I'll, I'll close it out.
Thank you, Mr. Etherly.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Crockett, you may have a floor.
Two things. Uh, CDL for street sanitation, I thought we had changed that to thirteen dollars an hour. And they're saying that it's still showing up ten thirty eight.
I, I think what we did on the last, and this is just from my memory. I think what we did is on the last two times that it came before the council, we addressed the individuals who qualified at that time for an increase. So that we wouldn't have to change our entire base pay ordinance. That's my memory of it. And, but I do know what you're talking about. We talked about changing it to thirteen and with, I guess, concerns about where we were headed financially. I remember we voted to increase the pay of maybe one or two people who were in their department when they completed their probationary period. We authorized they get the, that, that amount, that thirteen dollars. But I don't think we changed the base pay on it. And if Andre is still here, he can correct me if I'm wrong about that base pay issue, but I don't think we changed.
I don't think we changed the base pay. We were trying to do a larger base pay and let, and I think we were still waiting to do the, the comprehensive base pay to do that. I think we were still waiting to do the, the comprehensive base pay uh, to do that. But I think if my members are correct, uh, must add to the, is correct, that we did it for those who were present, but we were deferring to the larger before the, the uh, the future employee. Uh, but we, we haven't changed the base play at this time.
But we did change the salary for those employees, right? No?
Yeah.
As my understanding, you did give them raises.
Okay, okay. But my concern now is I think that we um, lost some CDL drivers and we can't, you know, no one wants to come in at 1038.
And Ms. Crockett, it will require base pay change. Um, I, I guess what we probably should do is uh, and that will require an ordinance. So the city attorney would have to draft an ordinance in order to make a base pay change. Um, I guess what we can ask is that uh, Ms. Halbers here, we can place that on the next agenda and then take it up. Um, in terms of what uh, everybody's willing to do and agreeable to doing. Just place it on the next agenda. When is the next meeting? What's the next meeting date? I guess it's going to be in September, it looks like. And my, my September the third is when, okay, September 3rd. So we're going to have it placed on the next uh, next meeting agenda. And the city attorney can uh, put together a proposed ordinance and we can take up the discussion of it at that time.
September 1st?
September 3rd is what I got. Correct me if I'm wrong. That's a Thursday.
Yeah, I, I wonder why you said Thursday was that?
Why you say Thursday?
September the 8th. Well, the first is uh, the first is, that's the first Tuesday in the month, so September 1st. I'm trying to wing it out from my calendar. I apologize. September 1st is the first Tuesday in the month of September.
The, the practice, Ms. Crockett, to go back to your question, what you all wanted was a comprehensive base pay ordinance because you still were dealing with the police department and all this got muddled up because we never, uh, I think we never finished the issues with whatever the police department uh, salary that we're going to be and what's attorney was going to get back with us. So, but you did authorize those people that were there, uh, but we did not specifically change base pays to make every new employee $13, if I remember correctly. Now, I would yield to Ms. Ramsey. She may know better than me because she has the minutes.
I'll have to go back and pull the minutes and the base pay for you in the morning and I'll let all of you know.
And, and I guess the other issue might be how many positions are we needing to fill at this point in time? Is, is there some temporary fix that we can put in place um, in order to get uh, get some people on board?
Okay, thank you. Uh, and my next issue is code enforcement, where one of the code enforcement people were using their own vehicle to um, go around the city and after they, without being paid mileage or anything. And after he asked about a truck, I think the truck cost $7,000 and the mayor took him out of the street. And he was actually tearing stuff down, getting things torn down. So I, I guess what I'm asking you to do, can we put it on the next agenda? Can we discuss possibly buying code to see if code has enough money to buy a pickup at $7,000?
Okay, we, we can place that item on the next agenda. Uh, obviously we would need some, some type of proposal. So I don't know who's going to uh, provide that. And then some documentation, I guess, as, as to what we're talking. That, that's always helpful to me. Get some documentation about mileage. What are we doing on it? Who's been paid? Who's not being paid? So that we can address it when it comes before.
Yeah, Mr. Ether, I don't know the status. There was a local vendor who had a, a, a Chevy truck that uh, the code enforcement officer was looking at, I think it had a hundred and, 160,000 miles on it. But uh, he was trying to do a cash price for 7,000. His finance price for like 9,000. He, at the time, because being held, uh, he said he may work with the 7,000. I don't know what the status is. I have not discussed with the mayor. Uh, I was briefed about it, by the code enforcement officer uh, last week. So I don't know what the current status is uh, or what, what the mayor's decision was or, or was he going to present it to you all or? But uh, the code enforcement officer on the east side has been driving his own, his own vehicle. The truck with the code enforcement officers uh, has been having problems. It only gets up to 15 miles per hour. Sometimes it slows, it stops, it sputters, uh, it needs some work. And uh, that's an issue that, that we have. That's why you haven't been seeing that truck. And I think it's sitting on the city yard at this point. But that's, that's the nature of it. But I think he can give you a detailed report for the next meeting.
Right. And Ms. Crockett, does that address your issue for the next meeting?
Yes, it does.
Mr. Ether, I have one, or two, I think. But I have one for sure. Uh, I, I talked to, you know, we had talked about district court. I talked to Judge King about district court and he uh, last, I'm thinking Thursday or Wednesday, forgive me, but I talked to Judge King and he had submitted, uh, he said that he was fine with the raise in the district court. We had talked about it earlier this year. The district court was asking for a raise and we need to see who was over district court and how were they supposed to get their raises? So the judge had given uh, Mr. Turner the, what he wanted uh, his people to have. So you, can we put that on the agenda so that we can discuss that uh, next council meeting? I was, uh, I gave it to, I told the mayor about it to put it on the agenda, but it, it failed as well. Uh, and uh, I think, or something else. Uh, the landfill, have, uh, have they made any decision on what's going on? Cause I'm here, we got a directive for the landfill. Then I'm here that we don't have a directive for the landfill. So no, that's another question. Uh, do we not, do we have one? Or what, do anybody know? Uh, and to the code enforcement, um, Ms. Ms. Crockett, you're right. Uh, Mr. The code enforcement spoke to me also and said that he is not getting paid for anything for driving his personal vehicle. And I think, you know, man, he, he's, he's doing a lot of legwork. Uh, the code enforcement on the east side is doing a lot of the legwork and to put him in the office is uh, a disservice to uh, the community because he's getting houses torn down and a couple of houses over here on um, next door to me that are getting torn down because he came out. He even educated me on how to get some more houses torn down. So I, I got people to pay to get the houses torn down because the, the code enforcement on the east side has told me what to do and how to approach people about it. And they've been paying their money to get their houses torn down. I think we got two over here on north, not North Ridge, what is that? Uh, over on St. Jean, the two houses will be torn down over there. So he has been educating me as well. And I hate that he's in, on death duty now, but I wish that we could see what can we do about getting him a vehicle as well. I'm just picking back and off Ms. Crockett, but I just hope we can do something because he is doing some, some work.
So Mr. Franklin, you had, you had uh, you talked about code enforcement and Ms. Crockett has already asked the code enforcement to be on the next agenda. So you added two new items, which would be uh, district court and landfill. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I was just picking back and off Ms. Crockett because I talked to the code enforcement. But I just want those two issues, uh, district court and who's over, which, which, which direction is the landfill going in? Or which way we're going with the landfill?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure those were clear in terms of what we were placing on the next agenda.
Yes, sir.
Is there, are there any other items that need to be addressed or placed on the next agenda? If not, Mr. St. Columbia, I think is no longer present. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
Motion made. I'm sorry. Motion uh, made by Crockett, second by Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll see you on September the 1st.
All right.